Hi, everyone. Uh... It's not Tuesday. Must mean we're here to do something special. Welcome back, Noel.
Glad to be back.
Now, we're gonna be catching up with what Renniel has been doing over the past couple of sessions. When we last left off, Renniel had reconnected with his mentor and had agreed to help him and a team out with something far away with a great danger to it. And it is as you hear the words "I love you" from Dante in your head through a message, you finish preparing, you all step through a teleportation circle to where you are unsure. As you step through, it goes from dusk to midday as you realize, oh, I've traveled far enough that time is different here. It's a different part of the day. And you just hear Trevor yell,[103.08][103.83]"Take cover!" as the ground in front of you all just explodes. You're still trying to get your bearings. There's debris all around you. You're now hearing the whistling of something falling. You're just in a sandy location. It looks like there's makeshift barricades set up and dunes all around you. You can see a couple of tents and you see people are scattering. You see... You see a lot of people here who are wearing very light-colored clothing that flows but still covers most of their body. You see head wrappings that would probably protect from sandstorms. You see gold-encrusted chestplates over their, what look like just everyday clothing. And you see a lot of them carry ko-peshes and what look like muskets, but with five barrels.
Right.
And you just hear shouting, "What are you doing?"
So I'm not sure what has Renni more befuddled, the heavy artillery or just hearing what Dante said. So he's gonna try to snap out of it and will just head towards the nearest cover where maybe he saw some of the team move along, keeping his head down, just actively just focusing on staying close enough together to Trevor. Actually, he'd look, he'd head towards the sound where he heard Trevor.
Alright, Trevor's direction. So you rush over to Trevor and you see he is taking cover behind what looks like just a sandstone block. Uh, he is... He's standing up against it, but he being a halfling, you decide to get down. And that's when you're also hearing not just whistling, but cracking. And you've been shot at enough to recognize you're being shot at.
Right. Okay, uh, what direction from... I mean, I'm...
Give me a perception check.
16 plus, uh, 320.
320. So you're looking around. There are dunes all around you. It seems like... It seems like the shots are sourceless, but then you notice just along the horizon of just cresting over the dunes, a flash and straight past your ear as you duck back down and you're peeking out every now and then and you're seeing just flash, flash, crack, flash, crack, flash, flash, crack, all around you in a full semicircle around what you're now making out to be an encampment.
Gotcha.
This encampment seems to be under attack, not just those of you who arrived.
And they look like they've been trying to fend that off.
It... As you're looking around, it looks like many of these folks around you are firing back. You see a couple of dead bodies on the ground. You see one person start running over towards your cover, trying to get there and just you hear another crack and they go limp.
Are they close? I mean, so seeing that, are they close enough where I can maybe reach out to grab them? Within like the six seconds of my movement, like the grabbing and dragging.
You'd have to run out in the open, grab them and drag them back, but...
I'd be willing to, like, unless Renni sees the shot going through their head, Renni's gonna try to do that.
Alright, uh, give me a dexterity save.
Save, okay. So, um, 15.
15. Crack, crack. Two go past you. You get your arms under this kid. He's maybe your age and you're dragging him back. Another crack. You feel slight bit of pain on your thigh, but...
I got shot?
You got shot and as you get back, you're checking yourself and it's just, it just grazed you.
Right, right, right.
It's not lodged in there. It barely broke the skin.
You're good, kid. So this is, that's...
This is Trevor asking as he is hopping up, firing off a couple shots, getting back down.
Much better than this blow. You're alright, buddy. And Renni's gonna just really quickly looking, how bad is it?
Give me a medicine check.
I don't have any medicine. My dad was a doctor. Does that, um... Does that mean anything?
Unfortunately not.
Uh, 10?
10. Uh, so you're rolling them over. You can see it's not good. The light-colored clothing is now stained red. There's gasping for a couple moments before
when it looks that bad and I have like a regular potion and I try to use it. Renni's just acting on instinct.
Yeah, so you feed him the potion. He coughs a little bit as you're feeding it to him, but the wound actually is no longer leaking.
Thank you. Thank you. Stay down. And then I'll join in with Trevor on the firing at whatever is like a close enough target.
Now you picked up a new weapon while you were still preparing for all this, a scattergun. Are you firing with that or pulling out your...
The range is pretty short on a scattergun. I think this was used on us when we were assaulting the banner at one point, so I would know I wouldn't be able to use that. So I'd be using like the revolver.
Alright.
Now I have some ammo for it.
So, firing, firing, firing. It comes to the point where you would have gone through a whole cylinder, reloaded, probably fired at another half of it.
Right.
And it's at this point that you hear a ding! Just echoing, overpowering every sound of the battlefield.
Have you ever heard that before? Is this some metallic mechanical?
Yeah, it sounds like someone rung a bell once as clearly and loudly as possible.
I turn to Trevor, kind of confused, ducking down, being like... I'm hoping it's a good sign. Just keep, keep your head down.
Okay. And he's gonna fire off a couple more shots and you'll notice the explosions around you have stopped. Give me a insight check.
Eight.
So you only just notice that as someone comes running around the corner. It's a tiefling. You don't have too much. They're all so wrapped up. We are guessing a sandstorm might have just finished up here.
Okay.
All you can really make out are horns and glowing yellow eyes beneath the scarf as they're running around with a scimitar and just screaming as they swing around the block. What's your armor class again?
Maybe 17. I didn't take the shield up.
They are swinging. You manage to just duck under it and what do you do?
Um, I try to, as best as I can, get in, um... Let's see, I position myself in between like, I'll do a quick dodge and kind of juke behind him and then use commanding strike if Trevor's nearby.
Alright.
And like, yeah. A little help, Trevor? And he's gonna use his reaction and I'm gonna use a bonus action until he's gonna attack. He has advantage because I positioned to flank.
Alright.
And now concurrently, I'll try to use my second attack to...
What are you hitting him with?
Um, it'd be like a short sword.
So you just pull out a blade and just once slice across the belly. This is, we're not in an initiative here, so it's more of just you tell me what you want to do. So you pull out your short sword and just give him one quick slice across the belly and Trevor just puts the, puts his pistol to the back of this guy's head and pulls the trigger. And shocks you a little bit and now you're looking around and while the camp is still being fired on, you see multiple of these assailants are now in the camp and there are people who are in close combat fighting.
Is it easy enough to discern my crew versus the attackers, looking at the person who was blasted in front of me? Is there iconography or like a colors or a banner?
So your crew being the people you came here with or the people who are on your side?
On my side. So you had mentioned some gold plate and some robes and so both essentially.
Yes, so give me a insight check. Insight or investigation?
Oh, natural 20.
Natural 20? Alright, so you're looking around. You're noticing a uniformity to the gold trim on the breastplates that all the people around you are wearing. And you're able to pick out the people who look like they've piecemealed their armor together.
I see.
Who are the ones you are fighting against.
I see. With the natural 20, can I find like a particular group of my allies who could use some backup or from a particularly strategic position where I'd be providing like flanking fire to a group that's being like attacked? Like, I'm looking for someone being outnumbered, someone who could use some help.
So, one thing that you notice is there's a group of about four different assailants slowly advancing on another block like the one you're hiding behind. They all have these, uh, same five-barreled musket firearms, which you're seeing after each shot. They're hand-rotating.
Okay.
And they are advancing slowly, firing on the block. You're guessing to suppress someone and you do hear someone screaming from the other side of it. These four assailants do have your back to you currently.
Okay.
You do see a couple other people that are still firing into the camp. And give me another dex save real quick as you're peeking around.
I get shot at just by peeking? That is dex save? 22.
22. Uh, you realize how long you've had your head out.
Right, okay.
And you duck down just as a bit of the stone kind of flates over you.
Seeing that, I'm just gonna run towards those four
Yep.
screaming to get their attention, um, pulling out the scattergun. I'm just trying to position myself in a way that is...
They have spread themselves out a good amount. They're trying to like converge and flank on this.
Then I'm gonna approach the, uh, the breakoff, the group that broke off, that's closest to the block that they're approaching to do like a shot and then hopefully like and then, you know, once they're distracted, like try and move toward, continue that way, so.
Okay.
Biggest group that's closest to the block.
Okay, so you start making your way in a direction where you can flank on this group closest to the block. And you are where these four assailants are converging almost in a semicircle crescent-esque shape on this block, you're running around it. And the quickest way to it would honestly be running through in between the two on this side.
Yeah, and that'd be where that would be going from.
You...
Looking to intercept.
Yeah, so you're running, you fire once into the back of one of the assailants and they just hit the ground. You manage to pump the gun again and fire on another and they also get blown back before the other two start shooting at you. And...
They'd be yelling out commands to kind of so like remaneuver or reposition or noting like, yeah, cavalry's here. No, actually, not on a horse.
So they, these other two assailants start to shoot at you and you're hearing the bullets crack past you. And you manage to get behind the stone by doing a dive and you just eat sand as you get behind the rock and you see the people who are back here. There is someone who looks like they are decorated, a decorated soldier. Badges and medals that you don't recognize are welded to the breastplate. You're in a land far from home.
Gotcha.
And you see that they are injured. They have a sizable wound in their shoulder and one in their gut. And there is someone here who is performing first aid and it looks like they've done a little bit of magic, but not enough. And they're just going to look at you and just kind of pull you down. And that's when you hear a high-pitched whistling that is growing in pitch. And that's when you hear a roar and the person who grabbed you just head down.
Okay.
And you just feel an immense heat as the dunes around you are just blasted with fire. And you see some of them turn to glass as a brass dragon just does strafing run. And that's when you see a lot of the assailants have started to turn and flee. Many of them being shot as they are running.
Okay. The dragon's on our side, right? Yeah, yeah. Sounds good, Renni? Da, da, da ping, ping, ding! Dragon. Sounds good. He's gonna be alright.
And he just goes back to helping them and that's when one of the other people from your unit makes their way over to you. This one had like a large shield and you're seeing they actually have like medical supplies on the inside of the shield.
That's right.
And it's a, it's a human man. He's probably about 6'2". Full plate armor. Just running over.
Sorry, sorry, kid. I got him. Good job. Okay, so I'll nod and then I'll just, one more surveying of the area, making sure if there's anyone else wounded.
So many.
So many, um... I look at him and go, you wouldn't happen to have any other bandages? It's like, I like, just, I'm looking around, just like some triage really quickly to... This is, this is pretty bad.
He's going to gesture towards the, uh, hem of your tunic as he starts doing the same to himself, just ripping off a few rags and making his way around.
And so yeah, pretty much just that. Bleeding arms, just chest wounds are trying to be plugged. Like, Renni's just gonna do like some basic triage.
Yeah.
And I'm all still kind of just like looking around, just making sure.
That is how your arrival went. That was your evening turned afternoon on your first day here in Morira, as you soon learned.
Okay, okay, okay.
Once. Go ahead.
I was gonna ask, um, does Renni have any idea like where that is in reference to where he was?
Other side of the world.
Okay.
Almost as far as you possibly could be. You are closer to Conca Sperra than you are to Elderus currently.
Oh! Gotcha. Okay.
Trevor would have introduced you to the team and given you a bit of background. His lieutenant, a human named Lieutenant Sharp. He only lets Trevor call him by his first name, Lincoln.
Lincoln Sharp. Love that.
Then there's also Sergeant Bradford. She is... She is the one that will put everything on the line to get that mission done.
Okay. You can just see that intensity on their face, like...
Yeah. The rest of the crew, he really only gives you their nicknames. You have Daca, Toasty.
Love that.
The medic that you met on the battlefield is referred to as Barber. Uh, the mage that drew the circle is named Trick. Then there's Polish, Pounce, Hooey, Mantis and Bunk.
Right. Huh.
And then the man who you came to the rescue of, you soon found out is the Moririn general.
Oh!
General Alu.
General Alu. Would Renni have known of any other conflicts going on across the other side of the world or is this pretty kind of insular? Well, isolated, I guess is a better word for it.
You wouldn't have known much about conflicts on the other side of the world from any point before your arrival as the... The rest of the afternoon Rest of the afternoon involves helping the wounded.
Okay.
Burying the dead. The evening comes and at this point you would have been awake for nearly 40 hours because you just came from it about to be night
Right.
into day. And you find yourself sleeping for what will end up being one of the last restful nights of sleep for your stay here in Morira. And the following day is when you're given your actual briefing. As well as when the introductions probably happened.
Okay. I think when it's Renni's turn to talk about himself, he'd call himself Trunks. Alright, Trunks. This...
And he points to the general.
I'm sure you remember his General Alu. He's going to be the one giving us our briefing. And, uh, don't worry, Trick is worked a bit of magic so that translation shouldn't be an issue.
You find your entire unit is sitting just on camp stools in a this very clearly a war tent. There are maps. There are a few mages that are concentrating on spells that look like divination magic from the times you've seen Horus or Dante.
Hello, everyone. I am General Alu of the Moririn People's Army. We appreciate your willingness to assist us in our time of need. Your current location is the Bleeding Sands in southern Morira. We are about five miles outside of the city of Godstone. Godstone has been occupied by an insurgent group. They have referred to themselves, or at least their prisoners have as Shadow Roni. Shadow Roni.
You're having a feeling that this is the translation magic not having a word for something and doing its best.
What we have gathered is that there are four figureheads of this group.
And a mage assistant you'll see will start casting illusory spells to show you what they look like.
There is their leader who is referred to as Toso.
And what you see is what looks kind of like a orc mixed with a tiefling. Where orcs normally have a greenish skin, this one has red skin and black spines that come out of not just its spine, its neck, its shoulders, and two large curling horns that almost sprout out into like antler-like shapes. As well as a couple of other residual horns that are coming out of the top of its head. You see they carry with them a glaive, wear very little armor. What armor they do wear looks to be banded along the legs, almost in a samurai-esque fashion.
Toso has led his people into the city of Godstone and it was not until yesterday that we had gathered intel as to why.
The illusion then changes. And you see a type of being that I'm not sure if Renniel's actually seen before. Soulforge. A soulforge.
Um, the closest thing would be the guards guarding, uh, Skashor. Or at least in the terms of like mechanical humanoid, seemingly sent here.
So you see a soulforge who is dressed in a way you can only describe as dapperly. They have a top hat on.
Wait, robot with a top hat? What?
Yeah. Who knows?
So obscure.
So they have a top hat on, a traveling cape. And what looks like a uh, suit. It's very clearly not from this part of the world. And you're not sure if this is how all soulforge are or not, but this one looks to be.
Reni is a hundred percent sure this is what all soulforge are like.
This one looks to be more clockwork than anything. You see gears and pendulums going in a open chest cavity. You see gears behind the eyes.
This is their lead artificer. Who seems to be referred to as Primer. Primer's main goal seems to be the creation of a weapon of mass destruction. Created using the Korot deposits that Godstone was founded upon.
Now you can kind of see where this is going.
Right. And yeah, so Renniel will kind of his eyes will widen recognition and just having just recently dealt with that. And just, oh, this is pretty big. Okay. Hmm.
As I am sure that your captain has made you aware, Godstone is one of the five largest deposits of Korots in Kavon.
That's a continent?
That is the world.
World, okay. Renniel knew that. Noel did not. Kavon.
Primer seems to always be under guard of Kobura.
And it shifts again to show a human woman. Maybe mid twenties. Uh, short, black hair. She wears a black wrapping that kind of forms into a dress. And you see just black line work tattoos running from fingertip all the way up to the exposed shoulders, up the neck, and ending just as they crawl onto the chin.
She is a powerful mage. And seems to be the personal guard of Primer as well as Toso's lieutenant. The reason you are here is that we need to find and eliminate Toso and Kobura. Preferably, we would wish that you take Primer alive. But should it be needed, you are permitted to end him.
And that's when, um, one of your squadmates, the one that was introduced as Hui. Will just ask who he is a half-orc. He you've realized he has a bit of a jokester personality.
Excuse me, sir. You said there were four targets. I count three. So translation doing the math wrong.
And the general just will look at him like are you quite done? Hui will very quickly just is a joke. I'm sorry.
The entire time, Renniel slowly raised, putting his hand down as he was about to ask the same thing.
Very perceptive of you, Mister.
Co- call me Hui.
Hui, is that not something people shout when they just see utter nonsense?
Grumble grumbles to himself.
Yes, if if you would.
And the form changes again. You see a lizard folk, not the swamp-faring kind that you may have met once or twice, where they resemble that of a crocodile. This one is very clearly a lizard of the desert, a lizard of the sands. Rough scales all the way down with a tan and black striped tail. Most of their body being tan just an off color from sand. You see they're wrapped in a black ragged rack. And you can see what looks like well-used armor beneath those rags. The main thing that's sticking out to you is spines. Not unlike an iguana, but also the length that they are at, it makes you think almost more like a porcupine sticking out of the rags along his back.
Okay.
The spikes that grow out of his chin are coated with what looked like dry blood in the illusion. You see, he carries a long scimitar, one that you're not sure if you could hold.
This is Jazar. He is Toso's executioner. He enjoys taking prisoners. And he enjoys making sure people know it with him. He's been given priority status as he seems to be a general of sorts in this insurgency. If you come across him, we would again prefer alive. But execution is not going to be frowned upon.
And from the, from his tone, you can also tell that that one feels personal.
Any questions?
Renniel's not gonna ask, but he's gonna look around to see if he can get an idea of what kind of force the Shadow Ronin brought to overtake the Godstone city. And what, I mean, it being the city that, um, has a lot of Korot's mining. They, I, Reni would have expected him to be more heavily defended, so he's kind of so he assumes that it's not from like sheer power, like sheer like manpower, but they did something tricksy. So Renniel will kind of take a look, um, and if he doesn't see anything obvious.
Give me an investigation check.
He doesn't investigate. Okay. But, and then if he doesn't see anything, nearly, uh, eighteen.
Eighteen. So one thing that is really jumping out to you. It's more thinking back on the day before when you were burying the dead or burning them in the case of the assailants. A lot of tieflings. Then you start to think. Some of these tieflings had wings. Tieflings don't have wings. Give me a religion check.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Those were Cambians.
Are they associated with a particularly evil god in terms of?
Not so much a god, it's just they're fiends.
Okay.
A lot of tieflings. Some fiends. You're not sure if it's you seeing something that's not actually there, or just letting your mind get ahead of itself, but the thought comes to mind. You'd need an army to take over a place as heavily fortified as what was just described.
Right.
How can someone get an army into a country without it being stopped? What if you summon it?
Right.
Whereas there are an army already.
Kind of just.
It said that devils and demons are eternally at war. They might have standing armies.
And so Reni will think about that. And so this was like time for questions, right?
Yeah.
So his, Reni will ask, so what's the state of, uh, Godstone then? Um, how heavily encroached are the, or what's the word we were encamped? Entrenched. How heavily entrenched are the Shadow Ronin? What about the citizens inside?
Citizens. The situation is as follows. When the Shadow Ronin were first appearing, they did some sort of spell or perhaps machine-assisted magic from Primer, but they announced to the entirety of the population to depart or join them. Many citizens fled. An uncomfortable amount joined. It is to be assumed that almost everyone in Godstone is a combatant. It is only if you are to see someone actively not participating in combat that you should then extract them from Godstone.
And then Reni will continue. And what have they been doing since they overtook the city?
Keeping us out. The most we have been able to do is have two of our dragons fly over at height and try to get an idea. But we are also theorizing that they have made bunkers underground. We cannot risk sending the dragons into the Korots mines as they risk detonating the red sands.
Hmm, hence bleeding sands. Okay. Hmm. Thinking back, the things that detonated over us, they resemble Korot's explosions, or they already kind of, or does it more mundane gunpowder and explosives?
The, like the shelling. Uh, so the shelling, from what you can tell. Give me another investigation or arcana check.
Uh, yeah, investigation is gonna be more aligned with what we're gonna do. Eight, uh, eighteen?
Eighteen. Uh, it seems that I'll say you find one shell that actually didn't detonate on impact. This was, again, while you were the day before. It's only about the size of it's only about the size of a baseball to give you context of scale.
Whoa.
And baseball's not right. It's shaped like a football.
Okay.
But size of a baseball.
Sure, like an egg.
Yeah. Uh, the tip of it seems to be uh, Korots dipped in glass.
Ah. Ooh, okay. So I guess I would have called over, you know, seeing that I wouldn't be trying to mess with it as much as Noel wants this away.
Um, you'll
wave someone over to be like, we have a live one.
You also probably would have learned at that point that, uh, Polish, a Silver Dragonborn is an ordinance specialist.
Hmm, love that.
As he takes his time and
To disarm it?
Yeah. He ends up cutting the Korots away. Not right up against it, but just like shearing this thing in half essentially, cause otherwise it's just a lead slug.
Right. And then like, I'm guessing a lot of the other mechanism is what would detonate it.
You're guessing this is a very you put together that this is probably the bullet, not the casing or shell that fired it. And it's probably just meant to detonate as the Korots seems to be the first thing to land where the glass shatters and then the impact makes it detonate. If there are no other questions.
Bruen would just kind of take a lot of this in.
Well, in that case, Trevor's handed a bell and told ring it in an emergency for close air support.
Gotcha.
Once you ring it, you have at the longest a minute to find cover.
Are the dragons just gonna blast indiscriminately or?
The dragons have made a deal where when a bell is rung, they will start their strafe run right where the bell was rung.
Okay.
They hone in on the bell itself. He's instructed to ring it, drop it. Run. So you as a group then would have departed towards Godstone.
Okay.
And it's when you arrive that you see just how dangerous the Shadow Ronin can be.
Okay.
You spend the rest of that day and the next day fighting door to door. Clearing every building. Not finding a single non-combatant.
Um, does Reni have, like, in these two days of fighting, is there like a better idea of, okay, they're definitely Shadow Ronin iconography or? okay, there definitely Shadowrunen iconography, or this is a person who defected? Does everybody get, does everybody who joined will get a cool t-shirt?
You're noticing all of their eyes are pure black with yellow irises. At first you thought it was just a tiefling thing the day before, but now you see people with that. Like, that's a human. That's not a human eye color.
Renny will turn to Trick. Ever seen this before? As he's maybe like kicking, like, one of their faces, with their eyes exposed?
Trick, who is a Duragor.
Mm-hmm.
Nah, not often. I've... I mean, I've seen someone possessed by a demon once, but, uh... Didn't really stick around too long. Locked them in a room. Never went back. Still got the key.
Is he holding up the key?
Yeah.
Huh.
He wears it around his neck.
One way to resolve it, I guess. Um... Is that what this is looking like? We saw a lot of fiends and cambians about. Did these guys make packs with them? Like, what? Is the Shadowrunen doing messing with demons?
Honestly, I'm not over sure. My best guess is, uh... Looking for power. Maybe they made a deal. Who knows? Could be hunting a warlock.
Right. Keep your eyes shut.
And it's in that moment, uh, that uh... Hui. He's... He's talking to Mantis, a human woman who you've learned has a reputation for biting people's heads off. Not literally, just
Oh, as in, okay, it's metaphorical. Gotcha.
Yeah.
I'm noting her as feisty?
And you just hear Hui "Look, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It wasn't that funny." It was funnier. And that's when a crack happens and he just hits the ground as his head explodes.
And so Renny will get down in response, like, backing away from the windows?
Fighting picks up once more.
Great.
Over the course of those first two days, Hui Pounce.
No.
And probably Lieutenant Sharp as well are casualties.
Okay.
It's on the fourth day.
Mm-hmm.
The fourth day is when you all hear a ping. Not from
The bell?
Your bell.
Oh.
You are also informed that you were not the only groups going in.
From?
The Mor Iron Army is trying to sweep through the city to take it back. From what you've been able to tell, your group has made it the furthest in.
Right.
You're also getting to a point where you think you're behind enemy lines and you might be cut off.
Okay.
So hearing a ping means someone else got this far.
Okay. Are we safe from dragonfire?
The ping seems far enough away to where you're not in immediate danger, but you're all hunched together in a uh... in a house that's been barricaded as best you can. You're one of the two that's on watch currently.
Sure. Who am I on watch with?
Uh, you are on watch with probably Pounce.
Hmm.
Tabaxi. And you notice their ears flick and you both start to look out. Now, you're tired, not quite to the point of exhaustion, but you've... Other than that first night of sleep, you've slept maybe six hours total, and you're now on your fourth day here.
Right. Yeah, I imagine it's pretty much like adrenaline at this point, and Renny's just like honing in on... He's like just very quick on taking commands, like, and just running through like the basics that, like, um, that Trevor would have taught him.
You've...
Not even thinking about being tired, knowing that
Yeah, you've been able to build up a camaraderie with these people very quick. You've also learned the difference between a stray bullet coming your way and one aimed at you.
You hear the ones that like...
And you're also finding yourself not flinching as much.
Hmm.
Um, you and Pounce
Oh, wait, yeah.
Look out. Can see a dragon in a very fast dive. You've seen a couple of these throughout the past few days. You know that these dragons do have riders on them? Usually it is a team of a well, a rider, a pilot, if you would. And two other folks, usually a mage and uh, someone with some heavier weaponry.
Hmm.
They don't quite have the rotary cannons here that they did back in Elduris. Although Daka has one.
Hmm.
Daka brought one with him. He seems to be the heavy weapons expert amongst you.
Right.
But they do have what appear to be... Do you know what a whacha is?
It is a refreshing drink that you have.
No. So a whacha, at least historically, is about fifty arrows all attached to like firework-like rockets that will fire off all at once. They have something similar to that. Except it's just fifty barrels. Fifty musket barrels.
Okay.
They'll light a fuse and it'll fire just going across until every barrel is fired. Takes forever to reload.
These are attached to the dragon?
Uh, yeah, so they have one strapped to its back.
Okay, gotcha. Yeah, Renny was like, Renny wants to take it in, but remembering what happened to Hui is just like still... So trying to get as much of you of that as possible, because it's a spectacle for sure.
So you see the dragon start to strafe and
So rad.
The the gun wall
Hmm.
is only supposed to be fired if the dragon is in danger. So you've only heard it fired once so far. And then the dragon pulled up.
Right.
So then you hear a gun wall go off.
Mm-hmm.
And you hear a roar of pain as the dragon
How far away is that from us?
Three blocks.
Three blocks. I'm
Trevor's gonna come up to that dragon go down?
And Renny will just describe what happened real quickly. They fired the gun walls. I hear it screeching. I don't think it pulled out. Three blocks and I'll point the direction.
All right, everyone. We're doing a rescue op.
And I think, um, uh, sometime, um, Renny would have wanted to see if Barber had an extra medic, uh, healer's kit.
Uh, Barber does have an extra healer's kit. He also has a couple... He has, he brought a lot of potions. He's gone through a good amount already.
Imagine, yeah.
Um... I will also note, you're probably down to about ten rounds remaining for your scattergun.
Okay.
Probably about twelve rounds for your revolver.
Okay. Renny will try. Noted.
Uh... And Trevor's going to take Sergeant Bradford with them. But otherwise, he's going to give you command of a small squad.
Mm-hmm.
The plan is to both come around and flank and try and save the dragon and the people on the dragon.
Okay.
Who would you want to take with you?
Um...
So you have Daka, a heavy weapons expert. Toasty is a sharpshooter.
Right.
Barber is the medic.
Mm-hmm.
Trick is the mage. Polish is your ordinance specialist.
Right.
Then you have, uh, Pounce and Mantis as well, who are just good soldiers.
Right. Um, who would be helpful for?
He's telling you, choose three to take with you.
Okay. Um, I'm thinking, uh, Daka and this Pounce. Does he seem like he'd be like stealthy?
He's quiet and he's quick.
Okay. Uh, okay, and then, um, I think Trick. Yeah, so Daka, Trick, and Pounce. We would wanna kind of be a more forward group to kind of maybe uh, grab their attention, like, come in, come in a bit louder. Actually, maybe not Pounce then. Pounce can go with them. Um... Uh, Mantis. So it's gonna be Mantis, uh, Trick, and Daka to kind of head what would be a um, a more louder distraction to kind of draw the attention away from Trevor's group.
All right.
We'd be bringing firepower to
And you are going with that group?
Exactly.
So you all manage to split up and go your ways. Um... Your group, being the smaller one, gets to the dragon first.
Mm-hmm.
The dragon is dead.
Oh. Oh.
But the
What?
Pilot and crew are still stable. They're injured, but they're alive.
Okay, um...
And the scary thing is
Yeah, what killed the dragon?
You haven't seen a single combatant getting here.
Hmm.
As you look at the dragon, looks like its throat was cut. And that is where we'll be taking our break. We'll be back in a couple of minutes, everyone. Stay tuned. And welcome back. Before we get back into the game, I have been informed by Lu Pon the mailman that they require a break shout-out. Upon penalty... Oh, wait, not supposed to read that part. Now.
Thanks for the mail, as always.
You've reached the dragon. And it is as you are administering first aid and you have Daka and Mantis just kind of looking around.
Right.
Trick is
Maybe post it up a little higher.
Yeah.
Start blasting if he sees anything.
A object is thrown off of the nearby roof, or should I say, two objects. Uh, the severed heads of Toasty
Great.
and Barber.
Oh, no.
And when you look up, you see one of your four targets, Jazar, standing there.
The lizard folk, right?
Yep. And Jazar is holding Pounce by the fur on their knees. They have a massive gash across their chest, and you just see him as he takes Pounce's head off as well and tosses it down at your feet. And that is when the entire street gets lit up. You are in the middle of the street currently. Uh... I'm going to need three dexterity saving throws from you.
Okay. Have I been affected by not having slept yet? Am I is exhaustion hitting? Does exhaustion or ever hit saves?
Not, uh, it hits saves eventually, but you're not quite there yet. I'd say you're at the point where it's disadvantage on checks.
Okay. Um, we're looking at a... These are saves?
Yes.
Um, nineteen, nineteen, and fourteen.
Nineteen, nineteen, and fourteen. Uh... You are immediately running for cover. What kind of cover are you diving for?
Um, it would be a building.
A building?
Yeah.
All right, so you are immediately running to the side of the road. Uh... Mantis gets just peppered.
By artillery?
No. Gunfire in the windows all around you.
Right.
You also see the occasional spell being slung out of it as well. All of which seem to be fire-based.
Okay.
Trick is throwing up shields to at least cover himself as he's trying to get over there.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, Daka is just unloading towards the buildings. Just making them rain debris.
Right. And I think Renny would be looking at the people he was trying to save and like kind of making sure that
They're gone.
Okay.
Of those three saves, you succeeded on two of them.
Yeah.
Uh, one bullet will go through your, uh... calf.
Okay.
Uh, you are going to take uh, thirteen points of piercing damage.
Okay. Nine, twenty-six.
But you managed to get behind cover.
Mm-hmm.
As does Daka and Trick. You end up being pinned down and fighting for your life for probably the rest of that day.
Okay.
Jazar will eventually shout out to you that night, where you have all regrouped
Mm-hmm.
barricaded yourself in a house.
Mm-hmm.
Toso told me that foreigners were coming out. Come on. Jazar is hungry.
And that's when bullets would start lighting the house up again. And that's when bullets would start lighting the house up again. And. It would eventually. Come to the point where you've probably run out of ammo.
Yeah.
Good news, there are weapons around that you have scavenged.
Okay. Probably worth talking like regular pistols, bows and arrows, like.
You have other items.
Yeah, so I'll be providing whatever fire I can.
Yeah. And it has gotten to a point where. You are scared and desperate. As dawn is coming again. Adrenaline is kind of pushing you through exhaustion at this point.
Right.
And you would eventually find your way. Under the command of Trevor. To the roof where you are. Just. Belly down. He did manage to recover Toasty's actual rifle. Which is a bolt action rifle. Toasty was the sharpshooter of this group and he's trusting you to take out Jazar. Roll to hit.
Okay. Let's see if there's anything I can like.
As. Trevor is walking out the front door. Hands up to keep Jazar busy.
Okay, I'll roll it. I'm trying to see if there's anything I can add to the.
I will give you advantage. He is being kept busy.
Okay. See twenty-five?
Twenty-five. So.
And then we try to do like a throw in a trip attack on there to. Attempt to. Add some more damage to it.
Well, going into a bit of a montage here. You put a round between Jazar's eyes. And another and another. And you empty the gun. And he doesn't fall over until the last one, at which point you see this black smoke just exit out of every. Orifice of Jazar. And. There's just a long rotted corpse remaining there. That was some form of demon possessing a body. That just. Flees off into. The city of Godstone. The rest of the fiends and. Cultist followers of this insurgency around you. Upon seeing the person leading them fall. Retreat. You all take the day to. Recuperate. Rest. Scavenge what ammo you can.
And Renny would just be pretty much just always be looking for something to do. He's not letting, he. As much as like so much has happened, he's just focusing on this needs. Like he's like always constantly looking to Trevor and like Trevor seems to know that what he needs is something to do to keep him like honed in. So that's kind of like what's fueling him right now.
You are able to recover ammunition for your weapons from the bodies of the fallen. You have. Another. Twenty-four rounds for your revolvers. And another ten rounds for your scattergun. You also have two potions of superior healing. From. Barber.
Well, I mean it's a barber, yeah. Can I have a shield?
Yeah, you can grab a shield.
I'll, I'll, I'll take Barber's shield.
It's just got like little slots for potions and a bag for bandages on the back of it. And through that day. The. Following day. You rest, you recover, and your team continues on with their mission. You do eventually find one of the bunkers. And you guys. Are going in quietly into the bunker. That means no guns. Give me a stealth check.
Okay, 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 okay. If I should see this. Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. You. And those who remain. Are able to. Sneak your way through the. Bunker. Pretty well. You are looking. For three remaining people. Primer. Is your main target. As they believe he is the one building this weapon.
Right.
Toso is the one who is. Leading this insurgency. You know where you find Primer, you're likely to find Kabura as well. You weren't expecting to find all three of them in the same room.
Convenient.
You. Come to this. Large chamber. Not far underground, as you can still hear the fighting on the street. You're guessing you're maybe just under a road. And this road. Actually starts to collapse around. The chamber. At which point. The. Some sort of spell goes off and it protects. The center of the room. What would you do upon seeing? All three targets. In the chamber as the spell fades and the rubble. Slides off to the side.
I think he'd be getting into position like, there might be like a default location that Renny goes positioning himself advantageously to Trevor, like maybe always to his right, always an earshot like. Maybe there's like a, and it's just. Maybe like with the end being in sight though, these guys being our main target and it possibly being over and he may be able to go home. There's a bit more like recklessness and like brashness. To him. It's less, he's taking it personally now. They're, they're the cause for all of like, for all of this. So. But I think he'd want to wait for like Trevor's signal or for any kind of direction from Trevor. You know, getting ready to provide supporting fire.
So what you see. Is Julian Bradford, the sergeant of this group. Lose it. You see her. Hold her weapon. Start firing and just screaming at your targets. The magic on the ground activates again and the bullets. Slow down to the point where they just fall. It's at that point that the. Whole shtick is up. You see. Primer. Immediately just go and connect something in a device in the middle. And you just hear a. Dun dun. Dun dun. Dun dun. Dun dun. Trevor's just going to yell. Polish, get on that thing, the rest of you, keep him away. And. We're gonna roll initiative.
During the hour of cleanup the day before or this day, could we have done like a training regiment? There have been time for like an hour of. Some quick gun content?
Sure.
Giving the advantage and everybody involved advantage, which will be more, yeah, if less than five people, everybody would have advantage. My side would have advantage and you.
Alright.
And I imagine it'd be. You know. Trevor almost humoring Renny at this point because like. Knowing that he needs something to do, he makes the group do some of like. Some regiments like with him.
Alright. So. This is what debris has fallen down from the street. In the. Center. We have. Primer. Right by him. We have Kabura. And then. Not too far away. We have Toso. And on your side. We have. Trevor. We have. Daka. We have. Trick. And we have. Polish. Renniel, where would you be?
I think based on how I described, I'd be next to Trick over here.
Oh, and I guess. Sergeant Bradford would be about. Here. Alright. So. Twenty-five to twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty. Alright. And then just for a visual aid. I'm going to be placing. This little block here.
Right.
Is the device.
Great.
So. Up first. It's gonna be Toso. He is going to use his action to unleash his beast. He's just going to. In a roar, a growl. And a laugh. You don't speak Abyssal, do you?
No.
It sounds. Sounds like someone who thinks they have won. As you just see his body start to. Just grow. And change shape. Until he reaches. His true form. Give me a religion check.
Great. So that's nineteen.
Nineteen. You've heard Dante talk about these types of demons existing. You're not sure where you heard about it. It's called a goristro. A siege demon. And you're guessing this one follows the demon lord Baphomet.
Wow. Wow, okay.
Those is action. And. Yeah, he's just gonna see what you all can do. Renniel, it's your turn.
Renniel is going to. Now, does Lieutenant Branford, does she usually use melee weapons?
Sorry?
Lieutenant Bradford, is she more melee oriented?
She likes hitting things.
That's fair. Actually, so I think she might not need any more help. I am. I'm gonna use my bonus action and use the tactic covering fire. I'll be calling on Trick to. Let's see. Is Trick able to see? Kabura, was it?
Yep.
Trick, pin down Kabura. You don't need too much of her nonsense. And so you can use a reaction to strike. Kabura. Do a range attack or a single target spell attack.
Alright, in that case.
These attacks are at disadvantage, FYI.
Single target spell attack.
I wonder what it would take. I might be the only one who can distract. This guy.
The only single target spell attack he has currently is Fire Bolt.
Eh, that is nothing.
So disadvantage?
Yes.
Still hits. Not a high AC.
Great, sounds good. Deals damage and now we have three quarters cover from her.
Alright. So. A bolt of flame, blue in color, flies out, hits her. She screams in pain. It's a scream of. Not physical pain. Although you guess she felt it.
Sure.
But more of a scream of. How dare you attack my children? As she's looking at the tattoos on her arms.
Ah, okay. Okay, so that's a bonus action. What would it take to get up to here?
Up to?
That point in the pillar. Is there some rubble here? Can I, is it like an acrobatics?
Yeah, give me a quick acrobatics check.
Okay, that is only ten?
Good enough. There's a lot of rubble around. You know what? We have a thing for this.
We do. We do. And Renniel will be like furiously, um, climbing up, almost taking in this guy's, um, you know, ferocity. Um, and like, with like a, like, almost like a trumpet blast as, as he's up there. He wants to get like their attention, and he's gonna unload with his, um, revolver at... Let's... Let's try to take her down. Um, so... First attack. Um, does a eighteen hit?
An eighteen does hit.
Okay, um, this is with the revolver. Oh, it's still a bolt action thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I just be for the bolt action instead?
Yes, that would be two D twelve.
Yeah, let's go. Uh, nine plus five, fourteen, plus my dex, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Um, and then, uh, another shot, uh... So I can still do another shot with that, right? With the bolt action?
Uh, so it is fire, put another round in, fire. So it is fire, reload, fire, reload, fire.
Okay, for that one. And then, uh, in that case, I don't, I wanna use an attack to just, I'm, just use the revolver.
Alright.
I have. At Kabura again. Um, fifteen?
Fifteen hits.
Okay, uh, two D six. And... That will be, uh, twelve points of piercing damage.
Alright.
Um, then... Yeah, I wanna, I wanna get that guy's attention. So I'm gonna action surge and just do, do more shots at Kabura.
Alright.
Uh, I'm guessing a nine will hit.
Nine will not hit.
And then, ten?
Ten will not hit.
Okay. Well, and then that is my turn, but, um, Renny's just gonna like, like, it's just sheer anger and ferocity and like, like, maybe doing it like Trump or, he kinda wants everybody's attention on him while he's up on there.
Give me a performance check.
Could it be intimidation?
No, this is performance.
Okay. In that case... Uh, that's alright. Uh, I have a plus eight to this. Eleven.
They're definitely looking in the direction of where attacks came from. But you have a feeling they're scanning for targets.
I'm still not one of them. Okay, still, okay, that's fine.
Threat assessment.
And that's my turn.
Alright. Uh, that brings us to Kabura's turn. She is going to... Yeah, so you see her just take them out, my dear. And as she lowers her arms, you see the tattoos slither off and just turn into these massive s- just a single massive serpent of shadow that is going to appear here. And it'll immediately strike out at Bradford as she's right there. That's a critical hit.
Okay.
And it'll just strike out and crunch Bradford's head.
Great.
But that is Kabura's turn.
Hmm.
Brings us to Trevor. Trevor is going to take one shot at Kabura. Yeah, it hits. Uh, and it does not matter how much damage I roll. She is dead.
Okay, okay.
And with that, the serpent also evaporates.
Choice.
Then going to take his second shot at Toso. That will not hit. So he fires, and you see it just hit and fall to the ground.
Oh.
He's gonna action surge and do it again.
Okay.
Those both will hit.
Okay.
Uh, so as it smiles, this time he aims one for each eye and just uh, and... It's going to... It's about as far as he can move.
Okay.
Brings us to Primer.
Hmm.
Primer, go and run.
Tow- okay, towards, oh, Primer, that's Primer.
He's, it's not a full sprint away, more just a, "I don't wanna be here." Just making sure he's not turning his back to anyone.
Right, right, right. Very dapper with his top hat. I'm taking that top hat.
Brings us to the rest of the team.
Okay.
Let's see. Trick is going to... Just make sure this spell does what I think it'd do. So you're gonna see Trick just focus on this thing. You see a magical blue fire emanate around his hand.
Hmm.
And then it disappears. And you see the blue fire and just wreath the crown of horns that this goristro has.
Is he getting a different kind of crown?
Uh, that's a critical fail on the goristro's part.
Let's go.
So that'll be... Drop the die. Alright.
What was the spell?
I believe it was called, as I already clicked off the page. Uh... Not Mind Sliver, the Psychic Fireball event, the equivalent. I think it's Mind Spike.
Why is this goristro like staring into my soul?
Make him move.
I will. That's fine.
Alright, so that'll be total of about thirty-two points of psychic damage. Alright. Daka's going to... I know that no matter what he does, that cone is going to hit our goristro friend.
Hmm.
It's another fail. Alright. Alright, so with the crown just wreathed in blue flame, Daka starts walking. He's got probably one more volley of fire after this one.
Hmm.
Worth of ammo left. And it's just peppering this goristro as it's and... Polish is going to get to work on trying to disarm the weapon.
Primer armed this thing?
Yeah.
They're all insane.
Yeah.
Okay.
First check is a success.
Okay.
So you see Polish just run up. He, he has dropped his weapon at this point and is just sliding over to this thing and just ripping a panel off. Just digging inside, making sure nothing is immediately going to blow up on him.
Okay. Good call. Oh no.
It's gonna bring us to the top of the round.
Okay, okay.
Well, the ones who have caused him the most grief are over here. So he will turn. And he's just gonna charge the debris.
Oh. Okay.
Uh-oh, he is going to attempt to gore you with his horns as he is charging.
Okay. Oh, it's just like that fight with Koski. Let's go.
What's your armor class again?
It is, uh, seventeen. I wouldn't have thought to put on my shield.
You are a very, very lucky man. Uh, that is a sixteen to hit.
Let's go.
I rolled a three.
Ah!
Alright. Sounds good.
Fifteen percent chance I'll get hit by this thing.
So, just charging. Uh, this gets completely annihilated.
Sure. Um, can I attempt to like-
Give me a dex save as you're falling.
Nine?
You will land prone.
Okay.
And take two points of bludgeoning damage.
Okay. Um, two point sixty-seven.
He's going to attempt to step on Trick. Yeah, that hits. Alright, Trick just took forty-six points of bludgeoning damage as it just it doesn't so much step on him as it does just kick him. He's flung back over here.
How's he looking?
He's coughing.
Okay.
Fluids.
Still in this plane of existence, scot it.
Alright, and
Trick got kicked.
That will be his turn.
Okay.
Renniel, it's your turn.
Um, I'm gonna like just look up at this thing. Um, and get, get back up from prone. Probably has a pretty decent range no matter what I do, so I'm gonna try to see, okay. Let me use the rest of my movement speed to kind of go here. And then, um... Daka, make sure, uh, ma- uh, make sure Primer doesn't get away. Um, suppressing fire as a bonus action.
Alright.
He can use his reaction to, um, make a single ranged weapon or spell attack. Oh, so he, so he can use the reaction. Once he sees Primer move, he can shoot, and if it's successful, uh, Primer has the movement speed to zero.
Okay.
Um, and then I will unload and just aim up.
Alright. He is well within the cone.
Yes.
So just go ahead and roll to hit.
Eat this cone. Twenty-four.
That'll hit.
Uh, three D, and then, you know, you have a dex save and it's gonna be three D six.
Uh, it's not a dex save for him.
What is it? He just gets hit with this?
Yes.
If I hit it? Oh!
You are essentially rolling to hit one die for everything within the cone.
I see, um, so that mean, and do I add dex to this?
Uh, for damage, yes.
Yes, okay. Putting me at a spicy sixteen points of piercing damage on that. Is he holding a weapon or anything like that?
He is holding a weapon. It is a large glaive.
Okay, um, I will do a disarming attack then.
Alright.
Adding, tacking on another, uh, so three, two damage, and then he has to make a constitution saving, so maybe I'll drop it. I doubt that. He would, but...
Uh, what's the DC?
Uh, my dex, which would be eight plus four plus, uh, three, fifteen.
Cool, I got a ten.
Okay. Just, just drops, I guess.
So yeah, we'll say you blast some of his fingers off. And he screams in pain as the glaive just it's bigger than you.
Yeah. Ah. Can't be waited last time and try to pick it up or kick it away, um... Let's see, I think I have another attack. Um, can this thing fire again?
Yeah.
Then I will. Uh, I'm guessing a fifteen doesn't hit.
Fifteen does not hit.
Okay.
So this time he's put his arm up and it just peppers his arm but blocks the part where you just hit, where it's a bit more tender.
Sounds good. And now scream out, grab your attention now, big boy. And then we have my turn.
Alright.
Time to be menacing.
Brings us to Trevor. Trevor's going to use taunt ability.
Taunt?
Don't pay attention to Trunks, pay attention to me, eh? And he's gonna shoot at it one more time. That'll hit.
Stay in your lane, boss, that's what I was trying to do. I love how the two most diminutive people on this board are trying to go like, "Hey, look at me!"
Alright. Great. Uh... And he's going to move over to Trick. Uh, that ends his turn. Brings us to Primer. Primer's going to attempt to keep running. Daka's going to use his reaction to make a single attack with his pistol. Natural twenty.
Let's go.
Alright. Uh... He is hurt and his movement speed is zero.
Mm-hmm.
Brings us to uh, Trick, Polish, and Daka. Uh, but first, uh, Trevor's gonna use a legendary action and, uh, feed Trick a potion.
Hmm.
Alright. So Trick is going to get up and... Yeah, whatnot. Let's go with a six level magic missile.
When you can't afford to miss.
Yeah, honestly.
Okay.
Those are pretty good rolls for Trick. Nope, those weren't.
Yeah, I'd say something.
It's twenty points of damage. So. Alright. Daca's gonna do his last volley.
Am I in the cone?
You are in the cone.
That's right.
So I need a dex save.
Not so fine. Okay, ooh, twenty-five.
That's a success. This thing also got a success somehow with a, uh, total of nineteen.
Okay.
So you are both taking half damage.
Great.
Uh, so instead of thirty-one points of piercing damage, you are instead taking fifteen.
Okay. Love that. That's what I wanted.
How you doing?
I'm, uh, I'm good. I have fifty-two still.
Alright. Brings us to Toso's turn. Uh. Because Trevor taunted him, all attacks against anyone else have disadvantage. But you're also right there.
Yeah.
So he's still gonna try. It's just a disadvantage is all.
Did he pick up his weapon?
No. He's just going to attempt to. Step on you.
Yep, just like that fight with Koski.
Uh, that is a. Twenty-four?
To hit?
Yep. I need you to give me a strength saving throw.
Uh-oh. Um, seven minus one is six.
Uh, so you are prone.
Great.
After taking.
That was a disadvantage?
Yes, twenty-six points of bludgeoning damage.
Oof. Twenty-six.
And he's going to attempt to. Just punch you while you're down. Uh, you are prone. Which means.
It's a straight roll. Uh-oh.
Your armor class is seventeen?
Yep.
That's a seventeen.
Okay.
Uh, so that'll be. Fourteen points of bludgeoning damage.
Okay, I missed hope. Oof. Hmm? Uh. I, let's see, I think you need two hands to use the ball actions. I wouldn't have my shield. Yeah.
Alright. And he's just going to. Take a few steps to make sure that. He's within striking distance of whoever he needs to be.
Right. Okay.
Renuel, it's your turn. You are prone.
Okay. I am gonna get back up.
Yep.
And let's see. I can feed myself with a, feed myself a potion with a bonus action, right?
Correct.
So I will take, um, a superior healing potion, which is how many D four?
Eight D four plus eight.
Eight D four? That's so many. And when I was doing that while, um, he is. I think, um, I fired twice with my ball thing, so. One, two, three, four, six. Four, ten, fourteen, eighteen, and two more? Oh wow. Okay, so. Twenty-six plus eight, thirty-four. Nice. Right? As I wipe the potion away, I'm gonna.
And, uh, Polish is going to just shout out.
I think I've got an idea. I need twelve seconds. Buy your time. Um. I'm gonna say, yeah, buy your time. Um, and we'll just.
Alright.
Seventeen against, uh, Toso?
That does not hit.
Oh, more, more. Twenty-seven.
That hits.
Sorry, twenty-four. Three D six. Um, ooh, fifteen, uh, twelve, fifteen, nineteen points of piercing damage.
Alright. So you fire once. I imagine you're firing while advancing.
Yeah.
Just slam firing this thing?
Yep, as menacingly as possible. Um, actually, he's a pretty big range, right?
You're guessing.
Okay, so if I move like over here, I will get an attack of opportunity?
Correct.
Just from, okay, so. And so as I'm doing that, I'm just. Kind of just drawing his attention away from anyone or anything, nope.
Alright. Brings us to Trevor.
Let's see. Oh, um, what would it take action once, like, put out, like, after you do the shot? Um, sort of the shotgun blast to kind of like brace with a shield?
I mean, you get a free object interaction, so you're just kind of swinging it over your shoulder, pulling the shield out and just wincing and preemptively.
Yep.
Uh, Trevor's going to. He has two shots left with his gun.
Hmm.
Sure. One of those hit.
Alright, come on you!
And he's just going to. Run about that far. Uh. Brings us to Primer. He's gonna stand up. And just keep running.
Great. We can't long get away.
Brings us to Trick, Daca, and Polish. Trick is going to. He's just gonna cast another, uh, magic missile. Not a high level one this time. Solid six points of damage. You can kind of guess. Trick had to use some spell slots to.
Just get everything ready, yeah?
Even just get here.
Hmm.
He's probably almost out of gas.
Okay.
Daca is out of ammo on his rotary cannon, so he's going to. Throw it. At Toso.
Alright.
It hits.
Let's go.
Just. Throwing it at him.
That was great.
Uh, pull out the pistol and fire at least one more time. That does not hit.
Okay.
You get a feeling he's used to something bigger.
Right.
It looks very small in his hands. His docket is a Goliath.
Ah.
And then Primer's going to make his next check.
Polish, Primer's the.
Yeah, sorry, Polish. It's. So the. Dun, dun. Dun.
And it's like, it's consistently humming?
Yeah. And he's going to shout. Trunks, give me a hand rotating this thing!
Okay.
Uh, that brings us to Toso's turn.
Great.
He's going to pick up his weapon. Make an attack against Daca and then attack against Trick.
He has such long arms?
Yes. And he has a pole weapon.
Okay. Oh, so we have a pretty long way before he can take attack of opportunities, huh? That's funny.
That hits. That hits. So. Daca's just screaming while firing off his pistol, just. And. You see. As the bullets are hitting, but not penetrating, he's gonna grab the glaive. And Daca just gets cut in half.
Okay.
And he's going to turn to Trick. Trick would try casting Shield. The glaive breaks through the shield, but it. Deflected it enough to where it does not take Trick's head off. Just his hands.
Both of them?
Yes.
He needs those for spells!
Yes.
Okay. That's pretty bad.
And then Toso will turn towards you too. And I guess Polish as well. Renuel, it is your turn.
Okay. Um, Trevor has a, a gun, right?
It's empty.
Does, does Polish have a pistol?
Yeah.
Okay. Polish, Primer's over there. We can't long get away. As I am, and that's a.
Big monster first! And you see he's like trying, he's putting his shoulder into the back of this thing.
Okay, maybe if I, can I move with this? Where is his range? Can I go here to help, uh? Polish? Do whatever he needs me to do?
You are just still in his range. Great. Uh, give me an athletics check.
I'm not being acrobatic?
This is technically with advantage because Polish is helping you.
Okay. Why athletics? Okay, um.
Eleven. This thing's heavy.
Sure.
And you are both putting your shoulder into it, and Polish is telling you what he did. Uh, while it is being rotated. Uh, he hit it, so all the energy will go out in one direction. Cause he can't disarm it.
Ah! Love that.
There is just one button that needs to be pressed.
Okay. Right, um. Yeah, so I, I just press it. Can that be my free object interaction?
Uh, it would be your action at this point.
Renuel presses it.
You are blinded for the rest of your turn.
Okay.
As this beam of green energy. Blasts into Toso. Blasts through Toso.
Toso's torso?
Yes. It's Toso.
Okay.
You just see that body ignite and start to decay on itself. In a green fire.
So blind.
So bright. You would also then just hear.
Is that coming from the?
No, you're pretty sure that's the blast echoing off of Godstone.
Uh-oh. Okay.
I don't think I'll ever do that again.
When they get my vision back, did it like clear whatever chamber we were in, like straight into the night sky?
It didn't quite clear it, but it bored a hole through it.
Right.
Into the night sky.
Okay.
Uh.
He's gotta catch Primer.
Yeah, so that would have been your action. Uh.
My, okay, well, is Polish now free to shoot at Primer with suppressing fire to attempt to?
Yeah.
So, oh, that's, when he sees Primer move, he can use his reaction to shoot. So, that'll be my turn.
Trevor would just be dashing. Trevor's gotten like just up to him. Just not enough to tackle him yet. Primer would attempt to move. And Polish hits him just behind the knee. Primer goes down. Trevor would tackle him. Mission successful.
Great.
But at what cost?
I have all these names of people that I have to cross off? Oh no.
So. We are out of initiative.
Yep. Um, I think Renu would saw what happened to Trick, and he would try to do some triage on Trick.
Well. We're gonna pick up with Renuel the day afterwards.
Okay.
You're back in the camp outside of Godstone. Upon Toso's demise, every fiend in Godstone evaporated into a black smoke. The dead were recovered. And. They're all laid out. You, Trick. Polish. And Trevor. Stand over them. Trick has. Two arms and slings. And you're just thinking back to when you first got here. You didn't really know these people. You knew Trevor.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
That very quickly turned into these people were brothers and sisters. Now they're gone. But they will live on with you. Trick will ask you "All right, Trunks, you don't wanna stay here. Where did Trevor pick you up from? Who, who do you want to go back to?"
And Renu will, like, kind of, kind of like look up to kind of take it, take Trick in and look at Trevor. Um. Skysure. Want to, Dante, do you? What do we need to tell you, like, uh?
I'll have you work with an illusionist to make sure I can see them right. I've got a, uh, it, it's in my kit. Would you mind grabbing it?
Okay.
And what you pull out looks like a ruby heart. Classic heart shape rather than yeah. Once we have the illusionist get this person down properly, you'll whisper their name into the heart, show it to the image, and just smash it under your foot. It'll bring you to him.
Right. And he's just, Renu's gonna grip it. Um, he's still kind of like still in shock, maybe still numb. And, um, barely keeping it together, but just the thought of it finally being over is like when he just starts to just like slowly weeping. Um, but he'll kind of like look up, like try to look around for like Trevor.
He's there.
And Renu would like make an insight check on Trevor, I guess, see how he's doing?
Yeah, give me an insight check.
It's kind of like, you look, he's looking for direction. It's like, how, how is he supposed to deal with this than realizing Trevor probably, that's a, that's a d eight? That's a ten?
You think you know what Trevor's gone through now. He's mentioned before that these are the kinds of missions that his squad does.
No one even ever hears of them.
No one ever will.
If the stakes were always this high, you guys probably saved the world several times over. That's enough, right? And Renu asks that, like explicitly, like as, as a question.
He doesn't answer. Trunks. It won't ever get easier. You should get back to friends and family. Maybe, uh, think of a story to explain how you look and he's gonna show you a mirror. Renuel has scars. A bullet at one point went through his ear.
Mm-hmm.
One of your tusks is broken off at one point. You have multiple gray scars on your face, on your arms. You probably have a bullet wound in your shoulder. There's the bullet that went through your calf.
Right.
You're bruised, you're bloody. You're ready to go home.
Yeah. And Renu would just say, "I don't think I need to tell too much of the story. God, he's doing what I need to do." And it's just very stoic, like he's taking it in. It's just like and then looking at like the city and all the people that have already lost their lives, like.
You end up working with the illusionists. You get Dante's visage. With one last look, you look behind. You give a nod and you crush the heart-shaped gem beneath your foot. Portal opens and Renuel steps through. And that catches us up with what Renuel has been doing over the past couple of sessions. Thank you, everyone, for watching. This went a little longer than we expected, but sometimes it's how it goes. Thank you to Tabletop Gaming Center for helping us put on this wonderful show. Thank you to Travis Roy for all of the amazing music you've heard tonight. And thank you, guys. Have a good night, everyone.